I know. I get us out early.
I know. It's all about you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the county council meeting of Monday, September 25th, 2023 to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Tavernick?
Present.
Councilmember Reitz?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson here.
Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Here.
Vice Chair McKellen?
Here.
Chairman Passamit?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then please remain standing for the invocation, which will be done by Councilmember Paula Brown?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, help us to remember you are in control. We pray that you will guide us in these decisions tonight and remind everyone who sits on this council that we represent, we the people. They, we are their servants. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I would ask a member of a council to make a motion and second for approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. McKellen made the motion and Mr. Dawson made the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be done without any objection and there are no objections. Next is a motion for the approval of the minutes of August 14th, 2023. May I have the motion? Ms. Tavernick makes the motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Are there any discussions? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection and there are no objections. Next, we have our administrators' report. Good evening, Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, sir. Chairman, council?
It has been a busy few weeks in Beaufort County. Our staff has been very busy, as evidenced in your committee reports and our biweekly status reports. One of the things I want to talk about quickly in our biweekly status report is our, as a new workflow system. You've probably read about that a little bit. So this is an internal system created by one of our IT specialists, Josh Riley, and this was predicated the vision of our county attorney, Brittany Ward. So this internal system is a, is a method by which we can more efficiently and more effectively process our documents which require signature. So this started with legal documents and as we continued to have conversation, this grow, this project grew into documents that would include contracts, IGAs, intergovernmental agreements, those types of things. So this, this workflow process is used internally for staff to help guide them to be in compliance with our rules and regulations. So we look forward to that coming here really soon and getting done. So this morning or this evening, I'd like to do some employee recognition. I have two members of Beaufort County Emergency Medical Services. This is paramedic Heather Jarrell and emergency medical technician Eddie Schroeder. That feels right? All right. Thanks, y'all. Right over here, we'll face council. So normally, when we do some employee recognition, I tell you a lot about them. This is more of a story about some actions that they've done. Heather has worked for Beaufort County as a paramedic for two years. Eddie Hare has worked for Beaufort County as an EMT for three years. Their job duties are to be prepared to respond to medical emergencies at will, no matter which area they work in. They attend monthly training to maintain their proficiency in all those types of things. In February 2023, EMT Eddie Schroeder encountered a special patient, 79-year-old female semi-wheelchair Brown. We'll call her Miss B. He was on a routine medical call assigned to the, his duties' primary coverage area. At the time, he noticed the patient's current living conditions and how her demeanor changed just because of his presence. He was able to talk with her and kind of see her light up because he was there to say hello. Well, really there to help her, but part of that is just making that connection to While she had hospice care in place to assist with her medical checkups, along with meal services provided, hot cooked meals, he noticed that she had very little food in her, in her kitchen or cabinets. And due, due to her limited mobility, she was really not able to maintain a safe living environment. It was hard, her windows were dirty, so it was hard for her to see outside. The exterior of her home was overgrown. You know, in her condition, she really just couldn't take care of the normal things that you and I take for granted, cleaning and landscaping and those types of things. But Eddie noticed she needed some help. She didn't have a wheelchair ramp and she's semi-restrained to this, to this wheelchair. So working with his regular partner, Miss Heather, they started a relationship with Mrs. B. They would check up on her. They made sure that someone cared about her. They made sure she had enough food. They included, they began to enlist the help of some other emergency responders. So they would normally be housed with the Ladies Island Fire District, so next thing you know, their fire department partners are there, making sure that she's cared for as well. They served her a meal during Easter and spent time with her and make sure she was well-fed and had great company. Now, her home is clean, she can see through her windows, the fire service guys show up and take care of her landscaping for her. Eddie and, and his partner still check on her, make sure she's okay, just stop by for visits, which are really important. And this isn't new behavior for them. This is something that they have done for quite a while. They tend to follow up on their patients after they drop them off at the ER. They make sure that they follow up on them later to see when they've been admitted and, and make sure that, you know, they, they show the folks that they serve in Beaufort County that they really care. This is really important for members, for your employees of Beaufort County to show that they care and really enhance the reputation of Beaufort County with their behavior. So let's give them a round of applause. It's always special to get to talk about folks who, who really enjoy their jobs and care about our community. All right. Next, I'm going to talk about a relatively new employee. I think we have a picture of him. This is Tyrone Jenkins. He's worked for Beaufort County for about a month. He works at one of our solid waste drop-off centers. As a new employee, we, we like to introduce new employees, but Tyrone is, is really special. Although he's been here a month, he's already received several comments from customers who, who stopped by there that he is an amazing employee. He's polite, he's outgoing, and very helpful staff. Folks really enjoy his company. Staff has received several emails recognizing his great customer service, his great personality, and his ability to go and beyond the call of duty. So thanks a lot to Tyrone. I wish he could be here tonight, but... And then finally, I'd like to introduce to you our Director of Mosquito Control, Robert Cartner. There he is. How are you, Robert?
I'm great.
So if you, if you haven't been to our mosquito control facilities, I encourage you to go out there. This is an amazing place and to say that it's a mosquito control facility is a real understatement. They have an incredible library and endemologists that do their work. It is very complicated and scientific process that they go through to identify and treat mosquitoes. And plus, they have a really great garage and an airplane and a helicopter that are, that are pretty unique to this area. So Robert has served Beaufort County for five and a half years. He oversees the Beaufort County mosquito control program and ensures that a He oversees the Beaufort County mosquito control program and ensures that the department's activities align with its mission to enhance the health and quality of life through suppression of disease-carrying and nuisance mosquitoes. We certainly don't like those. He stays active within department's operations to help staff during busy, busy periods. Robert loves the laboratory. I'm telling you, if you go visit the laboratory, make sure you take enough time because Robert's going to show you every variety of mosquito that exists. And there's a lot. I was surprised how much is there. He values professional growth and development and ensures staff participates in professional associations. Something unique about Robert is he, Robert's first paying job was as a ten-year-old actor on ETV. The show was aimed at teaching children to speak German. Robert, you want to say hello?
German, say it in German.
I can't. I was a very good actor. It was all scripted, so... I just want to say, I appreciate, thanks, council and administration for always supporting mosquito control. Hopefully, we're in the downswing of our season as it gets cooler. That, that changes every year, but our staff's done a great job this year adapting to some new things that we've developed within our program to make us more efficient and effective. So I really appreciate your, your support for our, so picture, I appreciate your support.
Great.
Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have some proclamations to do this evening, and our proclamation master, Mr. McKellen, will conduct those proclamations.
Good evening, everyone. The first proclamation we have is to recognize National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is September fifteenth through October fifteenth. Mes Nacional de la Orencia Hispania is annually celebrated in the United States to recognize the contributions and influence of Hispanic Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. Tonight, I have some representatives of the community here with me. I'd like to have them come up so I can introduce them. Veronica, would you come up, please? This is Veronica Navarro. Veronica is a Realtor here in the county and is a co-founder of the Latino Business Association. I'm going to ask you to stay here, but I'll be a few minutes. Italia, would you come up, please? Italia Parisi is the board chair of the Gola and Latino Advisory Committee and is a mortgage loan originator here in Beaufort County. And then we have Carlos Ahumada. Carlos, would you join us? Carlos is the owner and operator of the Enzo Shoe Repair in Moss Creek and also a member of the Gola Latino Advisory Committee. I invited Eric Esquivel. Is Eric? I don't see him. Well, he'll probably come a little bit later. Okay. Well, this will come as a surprise to some of you. Yo puedo hablar español, pero a veces mi vocabulario es malo porque yo ni practico mucho. Pero esta noche, con su permiso, I would like to, first in, in Spanish and then second in English, and lo intentare lo mejor que pueda. Es un gran placer para mí esta noche presentar a los representantes de la comunidad hispana, Hispania, una proclamación que reconoce el mes nacional de la orencia Hispania en El Condado de Beaufort. Y al hacerlo también reconoce las muchas contribuciones hechas por los miembros de la comunidad Hispania a medida que participar lentamente en la vida diaria de Condado de Beufort. In English, that says, "It's a great pleasure for me this evening to present to the representatives of the Hispanic community a proclamation that recognizes National Hispanic Heritage Month in Beufort County, and in so doing, also recognizing the many contributions made by members of the Hispanic community as they fully participate in the daily life of Beufort County." This is the proclamation. In nineteen sixty-eight, California Congressman George Brown pushed to recognize the contributions of the Latino community, leading to Congress passing the official request for President Johnson to mark September fifteen and September sixteen as the beginning of National Hispanic Heritage Week. And whereas in nineteen eighty-seven, Representative Esteban Torres of California proposed expanding the observance to cover the thirty-day-one period. And in nineteen eighty-eight, Senator Paul Simon from Illinois submitted a similar bill that successfully passed Congress. On September fourteenth, nineteen eighty-nine, George Bush became the first president to declare the thirty-one-day period, stating, "Not all of the contributions made by Hispanic Americans are so visible or widely celebrated. However, Hispanic Americans have enriched our nation beyond measure with the quiet strength of closely knit families and proud communities." And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month traditionally honors the culture and contributions of both Hispanic and Latino Americans, celebrating heritage rooted in all Latin American countries. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month starts on September fifteenth, which marks the anniversary of independence of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And whereas National Heritage, Hispanic Heritage Month runs through October fifteenth, also, also pays tribute to Mexico, Chile, and Belize's celebration of independence, which is September sixteenth, September eighteenth, and September twenty-first. Now therefore be it resolved that Beufort County Council is hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth National Hispanic Heritage Month. So I have, I have copies of the proclamation for each of you. I would invite you to not only accept this, but feel free to make some comments to the audience, and then I would ask you not to leave because we'd like to have a photograph as well. Okay? Thank you. Yeah, sure.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate it. The Hispanic Business Association was created as we are a very strong force, labor force, here in the Low Country. And because thirty-two percent of our students in Beufort County are Hispanics, and so we want to create a foundation for our future leaders, again, here in the Low Country. So thank you. This is very important to us, so greatly appreciate it.
Hola, hola. Man, I tell you, I am just so happy to be here today. I don't know if you can tell by the smile on my face or the glare in my eyes, but it is a pleasure to accept this proclamation today. I've been working in Beufort County for more than ten years. I've been living here for going on three years, and the amazing outreach that our local representatives try to reach us is amazing. Now, on our behalf, we have to now come out of the shadows, right? This is so important to our community, so blessed to be here today, and I appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much for what you have done for me. This is very, very valuable. It's an honor for me to stand up here in front of you and everybody else behind. I want to say that this is for my family, my wife and two kids. They're no kids anymore, they're adults right now, but they're very proud of being here. I do a job that really makes a difference, a shoe repair, probably. It's really hard to find somebody else, but I learned that because I want to serve my community, and that was the best way to say thank you. Beufort County and Hilton Head, Bluffton has been grown so much that when I drive, I see all this growing, beautiful place, and sometimes I can't believe it. But it's thanks to you all that we have a beautiful place, and I want to say thanks because everybody welcomes our community so well. So we're here to work, we'll stay here to work, and we'll do our best. Thank you so much.
And thank you. You did great with Spanish. Amazing, so thank you. Yes, it was right on.
Thank you. I think I'm pinch-hitting for Larry on this because he's the one that usually does this, but I'm happy to do this. And I would like to read a proclamation, and this is for the Beufort County Dixie Junior Boys. I'm sorry? Do you want to call them up now or do you want to give them when they come up? Why don't y'all, anyone that's part of that group, come on up here and stand behind me as I read this? I think Logan has that, so. Proclamation. Whereas in July of twenty twenty-three, Beufort County Dixie Junior Boys Baseball Team won the state tournament hosted in Bluffton, South Carolina. And whereas played with the mindset of being a team, being cohesive, and building a positive mindset through the season. And whereas the coaches, Alex Hunt, Jason Cotter, and Mike Simonsen entered the state tournament as the host team from Beufort County and went three and one in the tournament, overcoming adversity and winning the if necessary game. And whereas the Dixie Junior Boys represented Beufort County well in the Dixie Junior Boys Baseball World Series held in Opaleka, Alabama, with two well-played back-and-forth games. And whereas members of Beufort County Council are extremely proud of this entire team and wishes to acknowledge all eleven players. And obviously, if, if you're here, I mean, I'll hand you, but it's Chase Cotter, Landon Biltz, Landon Greenwald, Dylan Simonsen, Jensen Beretti, Brandon Hunter, Hogan Wareham, Ashton Smith, Ty Eames, Joey Patterson Jr., and Ryland McGarvey. And therefore, it is, therefore be it resolved, Beufort County Council wishes to recognize and congratulate the Beufort County Dixie Boys Baseball Team on their fantastic accomplishments on the field. We look forward to seeing all these young men, all these things young men will accomplish in the future. So I want to thank you all for being here. Coach, which, your name is Mike? Mike, yeah. Did I say something today? Pushed out of the spot?
Yeah. Just thank you for everybody's support. I know maybe a lot of people didn't know about it, but this next year, we should be putting together even better team, and it should be a lot of fun, so thank you.
Sorry, Coach, I'm for this, you there?
Yeah.
Your coach, what's your name? Alex. Alex, thank you. Thank you all. We appreciate all you do, and again, we look forward to seeing you guys, you know, more things in the future than you guys have planned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unlike Larry, I'm busy, so I'm not going to learn to do that in Spanish. I don't have that kind of free time on my hands, but I will help you, obviously you've spent so much time. I'll take this one off your hands.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we don't have anybody here from the other team. A lot of them are still in other sports right now, so they weren't able to make it today. But I do have Ms. Lopez here with us. So the proclamation, whereas in July of twenty twenty-three, the Beufort County Dixie Boys Baseball Team won the state tournament hosted in Bluffton, South Carolina. And whereas all season, they rallied around the motto of teamwork over individual efforts, trying to pull the same rope. And whereas the coaches, Danny, Chad, Jim, Jason, and AJ, entered the state tournament as they host teams from Beufort County and went six and oh in the state tournament, outscoring opponents seventy-seven to seven. Close to the Dolphins game yesterday, but you know. Whereas the Dixie Boys represented Beufort County well in Dixie Boys Baseball World Series held in South Hill, Virginia, with a two-and-two record, losing to eventual champion Louisiana. Whereas the members of the boys of the Beufort County Council are extremely proud of this entire team and wishes now to acknowledge all fourteen players. Chase, Carson, Logan, Wyatt, Brody, Eli, Micah, Tucker, Jackson, Collin, Anthony, Phoenix, Ethan, and Ian. Now there be resolved, Beufort County wishes to recognize and congratulate the Beufort County Dixie Boys Baseball Team on their fantastic accomplishments on the field, and we look forward to seeing all these young men, all they will accomplish in the future. Dated twenty-fifth of September twenty twenty-three, Chairman Joe Passamit.
Give them a round of applause.
I'm going to give you more work to do, and you're going to have to find it.
And not to be outdone, Mr. McKellen will finish with one more item.
This one will be brief. Today, which may come as a surprise to a great many people, is National Family Day. Intention behind this holiday is to encourage families to eat together, and in so doing, to fight teenage drug abuse. Research shows that teenagers and children in families who have five or more meals together a week are less likely to abuse tobacco, alcohol, and drugs. We also know through further research that if parents can guide their children to their majority without abusing alcohol, tobacco, or drugs, the likelihood of them having a problem once they reach adulthood is reduced to zero. So that is something for everyone to consider. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, Joe.
Okay. We are now at our first citizen comments, which is a fifteen-minute total. By the number of people that have signed up, we're not going to get to everybody, so I will read some of the names so that, you know, if you're going to be saying the same thing as the person before you, you might just want to come up and say ditto, and then maybe we can get everybody on there. Otherwise, we're going to leave some people out. We also have one person who wants to talk about another agenda item, so our first person I'm going to call up is Mr. Roberts Vucks. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir.
It's good to see you again.
It's nice to see you. I'm Roberts Vucks, seventy-five, Old Joy Road, Bluffton. I rise this evening to speak about the property on the Olber Road. I've spoken to some of you about it. This is a parcel of property adjacent to a county-owned parcel. If you acquire this parcel, it'll give the county approximately a hundred acres in, in one part of undeveloped property. We have an opportunity, which I think a couple of you know about that, that get into detail, to save the county six hundred thousand dollars on the price and sit, fit within the budget of what the rural and critical lands has available to you. I ask that you please do this, and let's get this property off the market and create this open space. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. There are several people that want to talk about Cherry Point Road rezoning, which is a topic for discussion. When we get to that, we will have a discussion. There is a plan for us not to take action on this, but refer it back to committee based upon several of the things that have happened. So the first one who signed up was John Kamer.
Mr. Passamit, esteemed members of the council, I stand here as a concerned member of Beufort County and of Okeechobee. I implore you to vote no on the rezoning of Cherry Point, not to send it back to committee for compromise, but to vote no here and now. As of now, our schools are on the brink of capacity, our roads are overflowing with an influx of new inhabitants, the health of the marsh is at a breaking point, and Beufort County residents have brown-contaminated water. These are all facts, right now, at current population levels. Before we even consider further development of four hundred-plus homes at Cherry Point, we must consider the over ten thousand homes that have already been permitted and not yet built in the one-seventy corridor. East Argent will be larger... permitted and not yet built in the 170 corridor. East Argent will be larger than Sun City when it is done, and it is one of many more like it. Growth is great when it is done responsibly. Throwing one more development in without understanding the knock on effects that promise to follow is the height of irresponsibility. That is throwing gasoline on an already raging fire. Mr. Passamit, you were a former educational administrator, and you took an oath on January 3rd of this year to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of both our state and the United States, as did everyone up there with you. Is pushing forward development that will undoubtedly overcrowd schools and disturb the educational experience protecting our children? There's currently one way in and out for the citizens of Cherry Point and no plans for additional access. There are three pregnant women in this community. Did you know that if their uterine lining were to rupture, they have 30 minutes to get to the hospital or they're dead? Is adding 400 homes and conservatively 1,000 residents between them and their only route of egress protecting them? Mr. Passamit, in your bio, it states that green space and critical land must be protected and preserved while at the same time, there must be a growth strategy. Is permitting more development without understanding the impacts a strategy? Or is it haphazardly subjecting your own constituents to growth that continues uncontrolled? The landing question is currently zoned T2 RN. I quote from the website, "This district is not intended to promote tract development or encourage rezoning," end quote. This classification is set forth to explicitly prevent what the proposal wants to accomplish. Members of this council, Mr. Passamit is the representative for the people of Okati, and as such, he should lead the charge in voting [beep] on behalf of us. Please join him in doing so. Do not rezone Cherry Point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council. Appreciate you serving our community. Mr. Chairman, my name is Derek Stetter. My wife Kathleen and I own 169 Cherry Point Road, and you represent us. Last meeting, I was disappointed that you voted yes on this zoning request. I adamantly implore all of you to vote no. There is no good reason for this to be rezoned. The planning commission spent two meetings and a lot of information that they collected. And at the end of those two meetings, they voted no, five to two. They have, they spent a lot of time. I urge, I ask you, any of you, have you been down Cherry Point Road during school in the morning or the afternoon? Because I know it's a no because you can't get down that road. And this is, this is, the planning commission stressed cart before the horse because there were a lot of concerns that they have that still have not been addressed. They've been addressed in a what if scenarios, but they haven't been addressed. Schools, roads, police, fire, those are all concerns. And not one of them has been addressed by this new proposal that now they're throwing in affordable housing. Why wasn't that on the initial proposal? Because the developer doesn't know what he wants to do to do yet. And this is bigger than just Cherry Point. If you step back and you look at, and you take a two mile radius around that area, you have Malin Bluff, 330 living units that have not been fully developed. River Oaks, 330 living units that have not been developed. Pepper Hall, and roughly 300 apartments, 200 homes is what I could get. You might know more specifics. Right there is 1,160 units within two miles. Now, we cross over to Jasper County. Do any of you know what Noble Pines is? That's 241 apartments. Okati Crossings, that's 512 apartments. And those are all going right beside the property line between Beaufort and Jasper County. And then there's also tentatively 900 homes behind Canterfield. When is it going to stop? We need the infrastructure before we can move forward with any of that. You guys are, you guys have this time right now to take a step back, get a plan in place, work with [beep] that we have here, and really stress and put that plan in place first before development continues to ruin it. And I haven't even, and I know I got 23 seconds, I haven't even touched on the oyster beds that are closed. I challenge you to strengthen the stormwater requirements for development close to water because it's not working. What we have now is not working. That's why the oyster beds are closed. So I urge you to do that. That is one of our greatest resources.
I apologize if this is a bit disjointed, but we're trying not to step on each other's toes. 600 homes between the existing developments that are already being built around the school. Add 400 more in this new development. That's over 1,000 units within a mile radius of the school. There's an old saying, death by a thousand cuts. Well, this is an example of that. Well, we can actually up that because they're wanting to build 200 apartments over at Malin Bluff. So let's raise that to 1,200 units within a mile of the school that's already overcrowded. My granddaughter goes there. There's a lottery system for after school care. You have to put your name in the hat and you'll find out a week before school starts if you have after school care or not. That's already there. The developer says that this is not a field of dreams scenario. I would say 150% growth over the last year would say otherwise. People from Beaufort County simply aren't playing musical chairs and moving from one development to another. We've had a massive influx post COVID. Everybody can see it. Just drive down the roads, look around. As I've said before, try and get a doctor's appointment. My doctor will tell me, see me in a month, and they can't give me an appointment for two months because so many people have moved into the area. They can't give us the healthcare that we need. Planning said the development will lessen busing at the school. That may be right at that school. But all the new walking students will only force other kids to be bused further. If the referendum that they're planning on to make this viable does pass, they're going to build schools further down the road, and these kids are going to just be bused to a different location, further down the road. We're kicking the can, further down the road. It's almost as if the approach has become, we'll overcrowd the schools, so people have to pass the referendum. We're just going to flood it, and they'll have to pass. Otherwise, their kids are going to be sitting in trailers, just like they did in the old days. The traffic redesign will widen the road, but new traffic will come from three directions now. It'll come off of 170, it'll come out of this new subdivision, and it'll come from Malin Bluff and everything behind us. And it's going to go from a line of cars to cars, kids walking back and forth to school, and golf carts. Go to any of these schools that have a walking community and watch what happens with the golf carts. That's what we're going to start dealing with next. When it comes to [beep], excuse us, but we're all aware of an over 65 community that was supposed to be built back there that all of a sudden got changed to something else. And now it's drastically impacting the schools. And I could go on and on, page after page. But as I said in the email that I sent to each one of y'all, to vote yes on this, you will be doing so over the objections of the school district that asked this not happen, the water and sewer provider that states they're overburdened, the local community environmental groups [beep], as well as the town commission, who after two meetings and five hours of presentations, overwhelmingly voted down by five to two. Thank you.
Our final person will be Terry.
Good evening. I think you all know how I feel. I'm not going to go back over what they've all gone back over. But I'm going to drift you back 10, 12, 15 years. And some of y'all may recognize me because I was here when, right here in this room, when Maitland and the smaller piece of property that is developing right now, that the homes were approved. Skeet Von Hart voted yes for two reasons. $6,000 per unit, and the one that they're developing right now, I can't think of the name of it, I'm sorry, the 63 acres, was to be age restricted, which protected us because of traffic. So, and closed doors, that got changed to open. So I've asked this question before, how does one person change everyone's vote? It was a small thing. A small thing is a small thing. When you go from a building, a three story building with 200 beds and 100 cottages to 330 homes, that is not small. It should not be small in anyone's world. Okay? So I would really like some answers on that. It's shady, if it's not anything else. It's immoral, illegal, I don't know. But it's all the other two that I said. And it really, really should be taken care of. It really needs to be put forth and taken care of because it drives me nuts that one person changed all that. In the same meeting, we had another Von Hart, Ms. Laura Von Hart, I think was her name, voted for Ladies Island not to have garages or barns. And her simple statement was, no more, we don't need any more impervious space in this county. She turned around and voted in Maitland and everything else. What are we doing? We need to set a standard, folks. And we're not doing that. And I am paying the price for it highly. And you all are. If you travel the 170 corridor, if you travel 278 corridor, we're all [beep]. We can take care of it by being more responsible. We don't need four year old data to try to plan something. We need current data. Okay? And stormwater, please ride down there and take a look at that stormwater lagoon. They have finally cut the grass that was five foot tall, no exaggeration. And you can actually see it. It is a terrible, disgusting thing. It is not water retention. I promise.
That will end our first.
I was number three on the list. Who bumped me?
I'm sorry. Say that again?
Felice La marca was number three on the list to speak. Who bumped me?
I did.
Why?
I have to get as many people as I can.
You have to have a criteria. I was three.
I just went down the list, missed you.
No, you did not.
I just said I missed you.
May I speak?
No. Our 15 minutes have been enough. I have heard, we have heard, we understand.
You put someone in ahead of us.
Yes, I did.
Who was not signed up on the list.
No. All the people that were on the list were signed up.
You need to play fair.
I am playing fair. I'm sorry.
Read the list.
You're not even playing by your own rules.
Read the list out loud for all of us here.
The people that could not speak, there are two other people, Ford, Joshua, okay?
Read them.
John.
Number two.
Two.
Derek.
Three.
Felice.
Here I am.
Coming hard.
Sorry.
Are you going to allow this?
When we get to our agenda item, you may get a chance to speak again.
May.
May.
Thank you, sir.
Can I just say, Mr. Chairman? No. No. We are done. We're moving on. I'd like to go to the committees now.
This is not American.
I'm sorry.
What is yours that she talked about at the beginning?
What's yours?
What's yours?
Should we be calling the governor?
Yes, go ahead. Committee reports. Any committee reports?
Sure.
I do have a few committee reports, and it's going to be scattered a bit. If we
made the mistake of not calling that third person in line, why are we penalizing her for that?
That's not a committee report.
Holy crap. You're a joke.
What a joke.
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'll second. Hey, y'all, I'm making a motion to extend public comment. It's just been seconded.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is, please, Felice La marca.
Are we clear that she can speak now or later?
Three minutes, please.
I emailed each and every one of you many reasons why this is a vote no situation. I hope you've read it. I'm not going to go through the reasons. Everybody else has. I'm going to remind you that you took an oath to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and South Carolina. You represent us. In our Cherry Point community, we, the people, are your firemen, your technicians, your landscapers, your fishermen, your artists, your teachers, your nurses, and you're not listening to us. This is pretty evident today. Even your own mission statement says, Beaufort County government exists to serve the people of Beaufort County in a cost effective manner so all citizens may enjoy and appreciate a protected quality of life. I stopped there because you are not protecting our quality of life. You've permitted 700 homes in this area, not counting the apartments, not counting the ones I don't know about. And is this responsible? Wrong place, wrong time, what's in it for you? You are not protecting our quality of life. You are not listening to the people. Mr. Passamit represents this community. He has never responded to any of our emails, phone calls, no communication. He doesn't know what we want. Okay? So that's very important. He's not representing us. He can vote no for 60 homes on Pine Island, 500 acres, but he votes yes for 400 plus on 71 acres. Okay. Mr. Passamit, this is directly to you. We want you to vote no. Not defer it. We want you to vote no. If you choose to vote yes, I promise you, our community is going to go to the governor, Governor McMaster, and have you removed. Then, then we're going to find a councilman or councilwoman who will represent us, the people who you took an oath to take care of. Not represent the developers. You don't work for planning. You don't work for county administrator. You don't work for the developers. You work for us. I urge the full council to vote no on the first reading, the second reading, and the third reading. Do not send this to committee because we're not going to give it up either. No, no, no. And then you will be representing the people of this county. And I thank you, those of you who vote no. I thank you.
Amen.
Yes, I do. But first of all, thank you all for letting this happen. It's for the people, no doubt. You know this council is for the people, without a doubt. And stay strong with us on that. Airport, we heard in the last committee meeting from John Rembo that the terminal contract has been approved. Within the next couple of weeks, that's phase one is going to start. That's the tune of about $31 million. And it's going to take about two years to get the guts of the Hilton Head Airport built out nicely for the people for great representation. Second thing we talked about in the committee was the move of the St. James Church. For about four or five years now, we've been throwing that thing around. And finally, we got a good working group together, some of us up here. And that, we met with the FAA, a couple representatives, and that's moving forward very well. Back to the airport, they have an ambassadors club. Does anybody know about the ambassadors club that's there that greets the people when they come in? They had a very successful year this year, greeting many people, helping them get through where they need to go and all. And I want to say to my, to our chairman here and my colleagues, I'd like to recognize them one of these days, here one of these nights, and have them here and give them a little proclamation, if that makes sense. Would you guys agree to that? Good. That right there is my brief report. Thank you for listening.
I have a report.
So I attended the library trustees at St. Helena Island. They got an update on Port Royal Branch, which we all heard in the last committee meeting. And library staff is already preselecting titles for opening day. The county continues to pursue options for a potential site for a new branch in Pritchardville. I mean, we've been talking about this a while. They have applied for a $50,000 grant from the state library, this is so cool, to install pickup lockers at Burton Wells. It will be like if you go to Lowe's on 170 and you order something, you go in the locker and take it out. We're going to do that with books if it's, if this is approved. We'll know that in October. And the pilot program offering tokens for free parking at Beaufort Branch has 400 tokens through August. So that's been a really good event. And the trustees accepted a request from Queen Quett to create a Gulligici Trail behind the library that would run through the meditation and rain gardens. No cost to the library, no cost to the county. And then I have a report from County Transportation Committee. I had to do this one by Zoom because we were coming back from Columbia. CTC, and Jared, you can correct me if I have anything wrong. CTC is County Transportation Committee. The resurfacing project is complete. They're doing a final punch list. The pavement preservation project is in progress. And Jared gave us the update on 170. They're going to start that work on October 23rd with the focus at 462. And the other thing is, the chairman said they will be using funding for 2023 to repair Bluffton Parkway from Buck Island Road to the traffic circle. So, that's, and it is in desperate need of repair. So, that was from the Transportation Committee, which is available for anybody to watch online. Thank you.
Any others? Ms. Howard.
Tonight, we're going to consider the last reading of our green space.
Yes.
And we, our goal of our committee is to start taking applications as soon as possible from the, from other, from parties for the green space program. So, we're real excited about that.
Any others?
Part of that consent agenda is, Ms. Howard, is that third reading of an ordinance, amending Beaufort County Code for the green space program criteria and application process. And then the second thing from the Finance and Administration Economic Development Committee is our renewal for the Southern Carolina Regional Development. I think we just finished a three-year contract with them. This is for another five years. In that contract, we can actually get out any time we want, but against a five-year contract to stay with them. They've done a great job, as well as the Beaufort County Economic Development of bringing business and corporations and jobs to our area.
Thank you. Any others? I have one thing. On September 19th and 20th, several of us went to Columbia. The South Carolina Association of Counties has annually, where we meet to discuss possible legislation to be supported by the counties dealing with different items to control finances, land use, judicial, things of that nature. That was done on the 19th and 20th. And we, Beaufort County, were well represented. On the County Government and Intergovernmental Relations Steering Committee, Tom Reitz was a member there. I was also on that committee. On the Revenue Finance Economic Development Steering Committee, Anna Marie Tabernick represented Beaufort County. On the Public Safety Corrections and Judicial Steering Committee, David Bartholomew represented us. And on the last Land Use Natural Resources and Transportation Steering Committee, Alice Howard. And speaking of Alice Howard, Alice Howard was just designated to be a part of a state municipal committee. That was, it is a big deal for Beaufort County to have a member on a state committee. So, congratulations to Alice Howard. Okay. We're at the Public Hearings and Action Items. I would ask a member of council for the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make the second.
Mr. Bartholomew makes the motion. Oh, Logan, you made the motion. And Mr. Lawson made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, the agenda will be, consent agenda will be approved without objection. Item number thirteen is a time-sensitive item from our previous Public Facilities Meeting. It's the approval of the proposed members discussed during the Public Facilities and Safety Committee to the Sales Tax Committee. May I have such a motion? Mr. Cunningham.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Move that we appoint Mr. Solomon from St. Helena Island District III, Ms. Ruff from Ladies Island District II, Mr. Lennox from Hilton Head Island District XI to the Tax Advisory Committee in accordance with the South Carolina Code, Section 4-10-320.
A second, please.
I'll second it.
Ms. Howard made the second. For the audience and those online, we're having a tax advisory committee. It's being done under South Carolina law, Section 4-10-320. It will be a six-member committee. By law, the municipalities get to appoint certain members. Hilton Head being the largest, they get to appoint a member. Hilton Head has appointed Mr. Morris Campbell as that member. Mr. Campbell then approves the selection of the other municipalities. And so, he has approved Mr. Charlie Wetmore from the town of Bluffton and Mr. Dean Moss from the city of Beaufort and town of Port Royal. So, that six-committee member is set. We have three members who represent north of the Broad and three members who represent south of the Broad. That committee will discuss the need of transportation and capital projects. They will bring their findings to the council in late December. Council will then digest that information and determine if it's necessary for us to have a referendum in 2024. Any other discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection. Are there any objections? There are no objections. Next is a third, a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance to amend the county's budget ordinance for the fiscal year 2024 to appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to county council to cover the costs of reviews, audits, and investigations. May I have such a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bartholomew.
I'll second that.
By all means, Mr.
Ms. Brown. Okay. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make a comment about this particular item?
No. So, you all think you need more money?
No, that's not what we need. We're appropriating money from our balance for this particular project.
And how does that impact the taxpayers? Are we paying for that?
No. We have the money. It's got to come out of our surplus.
So, you've gotten it from us already?
Yes.
Then, it is us who is paying for this.
Mr. Chairman, may I? The funds are being used for exactly what we've been talking about the last two months publicly, about audits and investigations to things going in Beaufort County. Being transparent, we have been going over this for, I mean, if any of you have read the papers, you see the things that have come out. This is us taking that step to hire an outside consultant and appropriate those funds to do just that, to make sure that there is no misappropriation happening within Beaufort County.
Yeah. How are you including the public and participating in that process?
It's, we hired an outside source.
Outside?
If you'll let me finish answering, I will clear that answer up for you. We hired an outside source. So, nobody within Beaufort County can interject or interfere with the investigation to protect taxpayers-funded funding that you guys put in trust with us in the county.
Oh, okay. So, that means that for, like, the abuse of tax that you all have committed in the past, we could possibly get some of our money back?
That's not what the investigation is about. Investigation is about misuse of funds.
Oh.
You're more than welcome to look back at any of our previous meetings for the past two months. We've talked about it every single time when we have been going through.
Yeah, but you're not addressing our issues. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
To address the issues, we need to figure out what the exact issues are, which is what these funds are going to towards that investigation.
And those reports will be publicly available and done here in the public, in transparent form.
It's okay for pictures.
No, ma'am, it's for information for everyone.
Your decision has already been made.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Any comments from the council?
I'd just like to say one thing about this. While we're appropriating three hundred and fifty, that doesn't mean we're going to spend all of it. We're just authorizing this amount for the billing. I just want to make sure that everyone's clear about that.
Thank you, Mr. Bartholomew.
Any other discussion? This will be approved without objection. And I see no objections. Item number fifteen is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents and provide funding for the purchase of real property identified as 34 Olmer Road. A motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lawson.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman, for sense of discussion.
Mr. Cunningham. Duly motioned and seconded. Again, public hearing. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make a comment about this purchase? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the county has been purchasing a lot of properties around here for the county. Does that mean that the county get to give us back our property when they are done with it? Because once you purchase it, you act like it's yours. But we want our own property. We want our property to belong to us, not to the developers, not to all these people that come into our town for three and four and five years, while we, who are here for more than fifty, sixty, seventy, one hundred years, yet to pay all the taxes for it.
Is there any other comments? Seeing none, we'll now go to council. Ms. Howard.
Yes, this property, I was at the Rural and Critical Lands meeting, and it was proposed that Rural and Critical Lands pay for due diligence. And it was a three-three vote, so it failed. I cannot vote. I'd like to have a roll call on this. I cannot vote for this. It has, I know it's adjacent to some property that we already have, but it also has a cell tower on it, which makes it less useful because of the permanent easement for that. And I request that we do a roll call move. I cannot vote for this.
Okay. Other discussions. Mr. Lawson.
Let me just mention something that's come to us here just at this meeting. And that is the fact that we are looking at trying to purchase this through our general funds. I know that, I might ask Ms. Stephanie Nagy to come forward and talk to us. But Rural and Critical Lands was also looking at this property. It's adjacent to Bailey's Park, which is already a piece of property looking at creating a park with. And then this property would sit next to it. That would make them this a hundred acres in, right outside the downtown area of Bluffton, near the Olmer Road center there. And it's been made to our attention that if we can close on this property within the next thirty days, that the purchaser, it's been appraised for that three point one million dollars. It's in the current budget. But if we can close on this property in October, that they would actually accept two point five million dollars to purchase this property. So, they've come down in price because they want the county to purchase it. If we can't purchase it, well, then they will look at trying to put it back on the market or have other purchasers to look at it. So, and that's something that we need to discuss here is that, that piece of property, whether to preserve it, whether it is something that goes through Rural and Critical Lands, whether we purchase it as a county property, which then we could look at expanding the Bluffton Rec Center that's across the street for purposes there. So, again, this is property in an area that there is not much else there, and everything is growing. So, again, something that we need to figure out what the best option is for us at this point, for us to close on as quick as we can. Ms. Stephanie, do you want to kind of give us an overall, from the Rural and Critical Lands, of what your thought was? And I kind of grabbed your hand before this meeting and said, would you mind speaking and coming forward? So, we're kind of putting you on the spot.
Before she speaks, I have a question. I understand it's not, it's not, we cannot use that land for balls and ball fields. It's too wet.
Okay.
Too much wetlands. But I, I don't want to interrupt Ms. Nagy.
Comment on that part before we switch gears? Part of it can be used for ball fields, just not as many ball fields as were originally planned. So, that's why we started to stay away from it because our goal, one of the goals I've been pushing in Bluffton areas, to get at least eight ball field center so we can actually hold tournaments. And actually, instead of sending our kids across state lines into Columbia, Myrtle Beach, and all over the state. So, it's not necessarily going to reach the goal that we initially intended, but not saying we would build volleyball parks, but it does have room for about three or four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Council. I'm going to just go back slightly as to how I ended up getting involved in this. So, in 2018, when we purchased the Bailey Memorial Park, I'd asked our contractor at the time to also investigate this property for sale. We were told by that owner that they were not interested in selling to Rural and Critical. It has still been on staff's radar for our purchase. So, when new owners became available to us as potential sellers very early this year, I was interested. And they had filled out the application for the Rural and Critical program. So, I did bring it to the Rural and Critical Board on September 14th. It is adjacent to the north boundary of Bailey Memorial Park. There is a very large, big, all wetland that straddles the two properties, the south end of this property and the north end of our property. My interest in it is from habitat connectivity perspective. So, if this property were developed, it would definitely have an impact on our wetlands as well as that property's wetlands. I'm also interested in this property from the green print perspective. It does have a high priority for water quality, higher than our existing Bailey Memorial Park. So, there is a possibility to do, well, to do an analysis of the property for future stormwater improvements in the All Joy Community area. So, I know our public works stormwater folks may have an interest in it in the future. I was informed that it was not suitable, that we went down the Recreation, Parks and Recreation Department side, but because of the unsuitability of the property with all the wetlands and the configuration of where everything is regarding the existing development, that it wasn't going to be suitable for that. But I still had an interest from county staff perspective for the habitat quality, water quality, and connectivity. So, it would be almost a hundred acres within walking distance to downtown Bluffton. I think it would be, it would be a good passive park and to include in our existing passive park.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yeah, so just talk about logistics here then of this entire operation. We know we have to close in thirty days. Brittany, you might have to correct me if I'm wrong anywhere in this. But we have a short time to close, to drop the price tag down with, is what in reach of Rural and Critical has in their account. Correct? Due diligence.
This is from general fund.
This would be general fund.
I understand. We have the money now to do it in general funds. They have the money to do it as well, but they do not have the ability to close within thirty days. They have the money to do it as well, but they are, do not have the ability to close within thirty days.
And they don't want to do it. The board is not behind this project.
So wi- with that said, if we did that, the intent would be to look at it for either holding it as green space at the county level, transferring it over in a sale to Rural and Critical, or transfer it over to a sale of stormwater. Now, those are three options. Yes, we're under a little bit of a gun because of the timeframe to save the six hundred and fifty thousand. Um, but that's just putting the information out there, um, of how we got to this timeframe we're on of getting this done before the end of October and why we, we, we have to make some type of decision before today or not. Because there's not enough timeframe if this doesn't pass today or gets postponed to closing time. Because we have to have another reading, this is only second reading. It, it's a complicated one. Lot of moving parts.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, Stephanie, help me, um, get a better understanding of what we are trying to do here today. What I'm understanding you say is that you are very much interested in this property for passive park in connection with the Bailey's property.
Yes, sir.
Um, the Rural and Critical Land voted three to three, so it, it was null and void.
Yes, sir.
Now, could you give me some rationale behind the nays and the yays as it relates to this property from the Rural and Critical Land program?
Yes, sir, and, um, Ms. Howard can definitely correct me if I'm misinterpreting. Um, my question to the Rural and Critical Board was to actually get a second opinion of an appraisal because the first appraiser was not on our conservation list, uh, conservation appraisers list. So in order to follow with the Rural and Critical procedures and policies that we have in place, I wanted to get a second opinion from a conservation appraiser. I'd asked the board if they would make such a motion. Um, per discussion, um, half the board seemed on board and half the board didn't seem on board. And then one of the board members instead made a motion to deny the project. And then that was the tie vote. And then there was no additional vote taken from that. Um, so the yays and the nays, um, they had concerns about the cell tower. And then also, um, I guess felt that.
Because it's on the property?
Because it's on the property and it's, it is a lease. It's not a perpetual lease, but it is a long-term lease. It wouldn't end until, I think, twenty forty-six. Um, so it is a long-term lease, um, so they were, they had concerns about that. And then they also, I think, felt that development pressure would be low due to the wetlands and buffers and things and that maybe code would protect the property. Um, the people who were for it or seemed to say, okay, um, seemed to want to be okay with getting at least a second opinion appraisal. Um, that was just, that was more the, the yays was just, well, let's get an additional appraisal and see what that says um, because of the limited funds with the Rural and Critical funding.
And so if I understand, Mr. Cunningham, right now, there's a, if they, if we move forward with this for the Rural and Critical Land, um, program, um, there's a time factor that I'm, think I'm hearing that we need to move. But the question becomes if council purchased this out of, um, their funding, um, then the council has to transfer it to Rural and Critical Land to put it back in their program?
I, i- if you paid for it out of general revenue funding, then you, you could hold it without being in, in Rural and Critical. The only reason.
But it wouldn't serve your purpose. If the county decided to do something else with it.
If you decided to do something else with it besides a passive park, then that would be council's prerogative.
But it, to your point, it could be purchased with general funds. There's limited funds left in Rural and Critical. And that was another concern that the board members had, that the dollars that are left and they realize they're going out of existence per se, um, are very precious. And I think that was their point, too.
Right, and I would defer to, um, Ms. Christmas to, to confirm whether or not general revenue funds has.
I'll cover that.
Yeah.
My, my concern is that if we purchase it, I would love to see, uh, in the passive park, but council has to do that, um, to make sure that it stays there perpetually. That's my take on this.
Currently, the item on the agenda, the, the funding source for this item is the general fund, fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
That means we would have to come back to council for a budget amendment to approve that money from fund balance. So there's funds there, it's not appropriated funds. So we'd have to come back to council for a budget amendment for whatever that assessment is. Right now, it was three point five, three point one, uh, million dollars. Um, if it's two point five million dollars, we'd still have to come back to you and ask for those funds to move to that account to make that purchase.
And for a separate appraisal, how long would that take?
I can't answer that.
Uh, I would, um, hire Compass South, who did the Bailey appraisal, um, so we can have a, a good comparison with what we purchased five years ago. Um, that would probably take just a couple of weeks to get that second.
Stephanie, you could ask them for an expedited appraisal on that, right?
I'm, I'm sure I could, yes.
Ms. Ward.
Just for clarity, uh, the ordinance actually that's in front of you today, the appropriation of that funding source is part of the ordinance, so he's.
So gives approval for both?
It does.
Up to that amount?
Up to that amount.
Ms. Ward, quick question for Mr. Chairman. Uh, quick question for you, the cell phone tower, the easement, is that able to be moved if we do acquire this? Or is that, like, does that have to stay right, right there?
My understanding, it has to stay there.
Are they paying a, a lease through twenty forty-six? Are they, are they paying, are they, what are they paying for that?
I am not sure of what the amount, the rental rate is on that, the lease rate on it, but I can get that information for you.
That's when they go to the county, start going to the county and do acquire it?
Would assume that it would be assigned with the purchase, yes. That would be a contingency of it.
And the thing I would stress on this is this is only a second reading, but if we don't move it forward today, there's not enough time. We can move it to third reading to get more information and then decide after that. So you could as well get more information on your end. We can answer some of the questions we have as well, myself included.
If we, if we vote for it tonight, we're voting, just to reiterate, we're voting to use general fund money to purchase.
That is correct.
Not just to do the appraisal.
That is correct.
So we need a roll call move, please.
And, and let me just go back and say that obviously in here, we're looking at purchasing this, which our appraisal came in at that three point one five amount. Um, and the seller is now coming to us and saying if we can move quicker, that they would reduce the cost of the purchase, um, from the three point one five. I think that's what Rural and Critical Lands was looking at as well, was that same amount of purchase of three point one five that this property now is at, at two point five. Um, uh, a- again, to, to preserve the forty acres right outside of downtown of Bluffton that, um, if we don't purchase it, it will end up being homes in that area. So again, just, just something that throwing out there as a, as, as, as what we're looking at today, what we're planning on doing. So, um, I mean, I, I would, I would ask for us to move this forward and then get the details and information, you know, by our next, uh, by our next meeting.
And included in those details, would it be a second appraisal? Because if that's it, we would need to amend what we want to do here because there's an expenditure of funds to do a second appraisal, and where would they come from?
I, I don't think so, Mr. Chairman. I think the appraisal would be on Rural and Critical, not county council.
No, no, it would not.
Why would it not be? They're the ones that want a second appraisal, not us.
They voted not to do it. They voted not to do it.
Then there is no second appraisal. We're not funding a second appraisal. We're not requesting a second appraisal.
We uncovered the due diligence costs already?
The due diligence costs are, um, different analysis, uh, environmental reports and so forth, surveys that the seller has actually already provided to the county.
So you would, you would not want a second appraisal?
If we just did an appraisal at three point one five and we're getting it for two point five, I'm sure the next appraisal would be under six hundred and fif- is not going to be under six hundred and fifty thousand. We just did the appraisal on this a month ago.
Um, beginning of July, I would have to pull it up, but Mr. George Owens, uh, the administration. They came, the administrators, uh, contingency fund, I believe.
And was Mr. Greenway the administrator at that time?
Yes, he was.
I mean, I don't understand what that has to do with the appraiser coming. Then I would ask to call rural, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I have one more question, Mr. Chairman. Um, how much, Mr. Robinson, how much money do we have in the fund balance?
For Rural and Critical Lands?
I mean, we should know how much we're getting ready to spend. And how much is in Critical Light Rural and Critical?
Right around two and a half.
Two point six?
Two point six.
I'm being told by Stephanie, uh, two point six.
Okay, we're ready to vote?
This is up to three point.
I'm not too sure why I'm voting, Mr. Chairman.
This, this would move this forward just as you see this now.
Correct.
For the third and final reading at the next county council meeting to purchase thirty-four Olmer Road, whether we can purchase it within the next thirty days at two point five or if the county council meeting, for some odd reason, doesn't happen in time, um, it's going to be three point one. And it's all gonna come from our general fund balance.
Correct.
This authorizes up to three point one.
Correct.
Up to three point one. And if something changes, it'll be less.
Correct.
We will know that by the next meeting.
Correct, because, um, there will be decisions made along the way.
Okay.
Okay? All right, um.
Mr. Ask this question, Mr. Chairman. Um, we are, we are basing this on the appraisal that was done previously, right?
Correct.
In July.
In July. So as Mr. Cunningham has said, it was appraised for three point one, but we can purchase it for two point five, but we have to do that within thirty days.
Our staff, um, s- said that the, the appraiser was not a, um.
No, that was Rural and Critical Lands. To do their appraisal, they needed someone that was approved by Rural and Critical Lands.
Conservation.
A conservation appraiser.
I got you.
Okay? Is everybody clear now on what we're voting on? Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Taverneck?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chair McKellen?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
I'll be a yes.
The motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay, this will move on to council for the third reading. Okay, next is the first reading of an ordinance adopting amendments to chapter sixty-two Solid Waste Beaufort County Code of Ordinances. May I have such a motion, please?
It's a move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham, second.
I'll second.
Uh, Ms. Howard, did you say yes?
She's a second.
Okay, duly motioned and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved for first reading without objection, and there are no objections. Um, item number seventeen is a first reading of an ordinance adopting amendments to chapter thirty-eight, Article two, Trash and Litter Control of the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances. Mr. Dawson makes the motion.
A second.
Mr. Glover makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I must excuse myself.
Yes, understood. Uh, next is the first reading of an ordinance for a proposed text amendment to Article seven, Division seven point four, Section seven point four point five oh and Section seven point four point seven oh to clarify that public comment is not taken for board, for appeals to the Planning Commission or the Zoning Board of Appeals. May I have such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Taverneck, second?
Second.
Mr. McKellen, duly motioned and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection. Item number nineteen is a first reading of an ordinance for a zoning map amendment, rezoning request for seventy-one point five four acres located at sixteen ninety-one Okati Highway from T two rural, T two R, to T two neighborhood center, T, T four N C and T three neighborhood, T three N, using a village place type overlay, Article three, Division four, Section eighty, Article seven, Division three, Section fifty. May I have such a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion. I'm chairman of the committee that was split on this. Um, I'd like to make a motion to send it back to committee where more work can be done and give more opportunities for the public to have input. I know they've had a lot of input, but I, I would like to have more input and it will give us an opportunity to look at other options.
I disagree with that.
Ms. Howard makes the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Glover makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded on moving this to the Community Services Land Use Committee.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Your constituents stood up here for fifteen minutes tonight and told you they want you to vote no on this on the first reading, not send it back to committee. I don't know how much clearer they need to be. Why are we sending it back to committee? What are you going to do on committee?
If we, if we vote no tonight, it will be a year before it could even come back up again.
Good.
That's what we want.
I'm going to say we should, we should vote on it tonight as well.
Vote on it tonight.
You want to put a motion and also.
Wait a minute, we have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor, motion and second. On the floor to move it to committee. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
We're sitting at a point where every other meeting we talk about more roads, more improvements, our school referendum coming up, it's over and over and over again. And we continue to use the crutch of workforce housing because every single one of us ran on workforce or affordable housing. Every single one, one of us ran on responsible growth and managed growth. But I'm honestly tired of negotiating time and time again. It's the, the same crap over and over and over again. Um, pardon my French, but it, it's the same thing we just did with the property a quarter mile down the road last year. And it's the same piece of thing that we're going to do in Old Town Bluffton six, seven months ago. And then there's going to be another one that comes up and then another. And the moment we allow this or even entertain the negotiations of this, it's just going to continue to open the door. I mean, we're talking about improvements on one seventy now. We're talking about a Transportation Advisory Board that we're putting together to make a referendum next year when we can't even keep up with the heck we got going on right now. Our schools can't keep up. We already know the next one's going to be booked. I, I'm not saying this isn't a great idea. I'm not saying the village isn't appealing and, you know, a- all those things. I'm just saying it's not the right time. So I don't care if it's not a year. That's fine. Give us time to move forward our, our referendum at that point to see if we actually got the funds to improve roads for the future. Let's see if the school board does actually approve their referendum this November. So we're, we're negotiating what? We got property a quarter mile down the road that's smaller than this, or it's bigger than this, that got approved for three hundred and forty-five homes. And it's almost twice the size of this. And we want to put four hundred homes on this one because it's a village style overlay. And I'm just not buying it. I, 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 I'm not saying it's not a great idea. Bluffton was built on this idea, but we do have other homes that are still being built that our kids aren't even in those schools yet. We're talking about adding another fire and EMS station right there in front of Old Field. We still haven't got that done yet, or Sun City. So I, I'm going to go against sending it back to committee because I don't see this being negotiated in this year. I'm not saying it's not in the future. I'm not saying I can't see a hundred homes or a hundred and fifty homes going there in two or three years. I'm going to be honest with you guys, just like when we had the conversations up high on it, at some point, it's going to be developed. At some point, this land is going to be developed. It's on board, but not, not this, not this time. So I will vote against your.
I, I think we, this is the reason for going back to committee. You can negotiate the time schedule, you can negotiate the infrastructure to be put in. You can, all those things are tools that you can use.
Correct, but none of it can be negotiated if we don't know if we're getting the tax dollars to fix our roads.
I, I agree, and I agree with you about the referendum. Um, it could be in committee for a very long time, too. But right now, um, they changed their proposal from no affordable housing to twenty percent. And that was not enough. That was not enough. I will say that openly, but this would give us a tool to go back again. But in a year, um, well, in lessening, by right, they can do what they can do. But they, they'll be h- held still for a year.
Affordable housing and still houses in that area.
I just wanted you to be aware of that. And also, we have no control over what Jasper County does.
Correct, but they are still on our roads and we're still footing the bill for them being on our roads right there in Argent.
We can't control what they do at all. We only control our own house.
Exactly, which is why we'll vote against postponing and we'll vote no when we call it to order.
You would have my feeling.
And let me, let me just say this, that obviously, you know, uh, everything, growing as it is, we do not want more growth. We're trying to limit that and, and make it, make it something that, um, is palatable. Um, if you made me vote today, I would vote against it. However, I go back and, and look at some of the things that, that I've heard other council people talk about, which is property rights. And that is the property right of this property owner to at least let him go back and try to, um, have an opportunity to come back with something else. Um, but, but again, that's, that's up to the property owner. He might not come back with anything, but sending it back to committee does not cost us anything, doesn't hurt anything. It allows that property owner then to, to consider, he knows our feeling with, with the way it is right now. Um, so again, I, I would vote to send it back, uh, and then there would be more input from the community. Um, and there'd be things that they're, excuse me, I'm talking. So it, it's something that gives that property, if I own the property, whether it's that piece or someplace else, um, I'd want the opportunity to at least consider what options are, are out there. Um, however, again, as I mentioned, if maybe vote today, I, I would definitely vote against it.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, can I say one thing? Educational purposes for me, this is not more of the builder coming up with a twenty percent affordable housing off the cuff because he thinks that's going to get that vote. I thought this was a rezoning issue. So if this was already bought with a zoning in mind.
It has not been purchased.
It's not purchased.
Which is not been purchased.
There is no property on it.
So there is zoning already in mind that's there that doesn't allow this. This is what these people want to hear about. Go, listen, going back to committee, i- i- it's going to happen that way anyway. But why don't we get our jobs done first with infrastructure and then come back to this? My thing, if it's a rezoning thing, has nothing to do with affordable housing, it's, it's a rezoning.
If it, if it went back to committee, we would have an opportunity to put requirements for the built, for the, for them to do some of that infrastructure.
Ms. Howard, my thing is this, too. Some of us up here ran on protect and preserve the people and the environment. And if these people want us to vote no on this, and we're at this point right now, we have all the information we need to know.
The people that want to vote it through, where are they?
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying if this is a vote no and you say it's going to come up in a year from now, they're going to put more information together, we'll get it, we'll gather. Why, why do we want to take our jobs and just kick it down the road? I'm, again, I'm seven months into this, so I'm learning. Again, I'm seven months into this, so I'm learning with everybody here, let's do this together. But, you know, going back to the committee just to get more things to appease somebody, I don't know how that makes any sense.
Mr. Chairman, under the current property rights, what would be built here? Let's clarify.
One house per three acres.
There you go. There you go. That's the zoning. I mean, come on, we got it.
The way it's set up now, it's one house per three acres. That's the zoning of this property right now.
Captain, I don't know. Let's, you know, let's do our jobs, the way I look at it.
Other comments?
I thought we were voting on seventy-one acres and four hundred homes.
No.
The proposal attached to the rezoning is that, which until we have building agreements means absolutely nothing.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely nothing. So.
That's why we would, when I made the motion, send it back to committee.
And they're more than welcome to negotiate for the next year why it's not on our plate, because we got enough going on.
It may take all of that before we get what we want. We're going to set a precedent.
What about what we want?
You're not helping us by yelling from the audience, so do me a favor. Let us deliberate up here. We heard what you said, but you're not helping us when you're doing that, just a distraction, okay? Just do me a favor. I know it's hard, but you're not helping us at all.
We, the county, have responsibilities about managing the growth of the county. We all agree the growth is coming. We do not have the right to stop growth, but we have the right to manage the growth. In this particular instance, what is attractive to this property is that it will connect to the properties around it and that it will become a village-type community, which makes it walkable. The way it can be designed, we, the county, will have a responsibility to ensure that it's done that way. If it is not, it's never going to be approved. Are there going to be improvements on the roads? Yes, there are. Will there be connected connectivity within the community? Yes, there will be. But we can't do that now until we sit with the developer to say before this comes to council for approval that we're going to get certain agreements. Whether you agree with that or not, I'm sorry, but that's the way we feel we need to approach this. Otherwise, it'll be just another development, and that's not what we want. We can't control developments in our municipalities. They have municipal law. They have development agreements that were signed thirty-some years ago that said the property is going to be developed a certain way. We can only control what is in unincorporated Beaufort County. This will become a model of how Beaufort County develops.
Just don't rezonate.
You said thirty years ago, they said this thirty years ago. This is what they said thirty years ago. We're correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question I have, and I don't know, is planning Rob here?
Yes, I saw him. He's back there. Rob Merchant?
Yeah. One of the threats we had several years ago was annexation into Hardyville.
Yes.
Is this a potential for annexation into Hardyville?
Not sure. I don't think so.
How could it be Hardyville?
Miles away.
It's miles away?
No, Hardyville's across the street.
Across the street, yes. Jasper County is across the street.
Jasper County.
And Hardyville's across the street.
That's why I'm asking. I don't know, you know? And I think that's the kind of issue that we got to confront, because that threat is always there. If we fail to do something, if they cannot annex into Hardyville, you know, it may change pitch for me.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Chuck's coming to talk.
Oh, Chuck's coming to talk.
So I was back there talking to Rob, our planning director, and we can find that information out. We don't know where that growth boundary is. We can't speak for the city of Hardyville. From staff's perspective, with this place type overlay, what we can offer are options. Staff's not going to pick a side one way or the other, but we offer options. If we are to control growth, this place type overlay is very unique, and it offers the opportunity to not only change the zoning, but then you do a development agreement. The county, if you choose to do this, holds all the cards, everything, all of it. There's nothing that we're going into that we have to do. We can bring back options or not. But if that, if it goes back to the committee, we can do that work. It may turn into something great. If it's voted down, that's another option. So anyway, I know that's kind of a non-answer with Hardyville, but that's the best we could do. Thanks.
Chairman, eh?
Yes.
I'm not denying that it's a good plan. I'm not denying that it's, it looks good aesthetically. It's a good idea. I don't want to hold the cards. I don't, that's not, our job is to hold cards. What can we do? What can't we do? I want to slow down growth until we can catch up on our roads and our schools. It's that simple. There's really nothing to negotiate. They want four hundred homes. I don't care if they'll give us fifty percent for workforce housing. It's still four hundred homes. And more people in workforce housing are going to have more kids than people outside of workforce housing. So what are we going to negotiate? Unless they're willing to cut this thing down over fifty percent, I have no interest whatsoever. I mean, it's just the nature of the game. I don't care about holding the cards. I don't care about putting my name on a cool project I got done. It's not why I'm here.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you take simple math, now help me with this. You have somebody that wants, you want to talk about, Mr. Cunningham, controlling growth. Somebody's proposing four hundred homes in a zoning that doesn't allow it, but the zoning allows one home per three acres. How many acres are we talking about? Seventy-one?
Twenty-four homes.
What's the, what's the simple math in that? How many homes?
Twenty-three and a half.
Twenty-three versus four? Four hundred homes. I'm telling you, I don't think there's much of a discussion or an argument.
We don't know if there's going to be four hundred homes.
Logan, we don't want to, we don't want to control that. We're here to do our jobs. Why don't we just do that tonight?
May I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Why haven't we met the developer? Has anyone met the developer? Person buying this?
His representative was that?
But no, Pine Island, we have a developer, the owner of Pine Island, he's sitting right here in the audience. He came to county council all the time and spoke with us. I'd like to know who the person is that's buying this and wants it. Has anyone up here met the first people?
No, just his attorneys.
I know that, but I want to know who's buying it.
You won't know that until they buy it.
I know these people we represent, I don't know if this developer even lives in the county, so I owe them nothing.
Yeah.
I don't know who they are. It makes no difference to me. My job is to manage growth. And right now, our school's overpopulated, and so are our roads, and I can't even, even giving an inch, people are going to take a mile. Because of the same arguments you guys used against me on Pine Island. I mean, I'm just speaking the same language that we did four months ago.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, okay.
What's the question?
What's the question is to move it to back to committee.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Tabernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Dawson left. Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
No.
Vice Chair McAllen?
Nope.
Chairman Passamit?
I'm going to say yes, and it is defeated.
It's defeated.
Call the question, Mr. Chairman?
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll call the question. Ms. Howard made the motion.
Yep.
I'm sorry. Oh, that's right. Now we need a motion on the first reading. May I have such a motion?
Motion on the first reading to?
No motion means it fails automatically.
Right.
Anyone making a motion? Hearing no motions, we should move on.
Yep, okay. Item number twenty is a first reading of an ordinance ratifying the salaries for various elected officials and amend section two dash three four seven of the Beaufort County Code of Laws establishing the salaries for various elected and appointed individuals. A motion, please?
Just for clarity.
Yeah, please.
So they know.
Let them know it has failed, because there was no motion. Just for clarity for the public, it is, it has failed.
It's failed.
It is all our books.
Is that a legal opinion or that she'll take?
No.
That is what it means. They were confused. That's what it means.
So it's not going back to committee?
No.
No.
It will not go back.
So we'll see you in a year.
Yes, yes.
I got to be reelected, so I don't know what to tell you.
That's what it means. It can't come back for a year.
Yep.
I wasn't sure.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, just, I was all confused out there, but by all means.
Okay, I need a motion and second for the item number twenty.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Bartholomew. Motion.
Discussion.
Discussion. Yes, discussion. Okay. What's she coming up here for? She's going to give us the accurate numbers now.
That's okay, come on.
I don't have to speak.
Well, we need to know what the numbers are.
Yeah.
For two people.
We have the auditor sitting in the audience here.
Here are the numbers that we were asked to present to council at our last committee meeting. Unfortunately, Catherine Mead had something she had this evening that she couldn't get out of, so hopefully I can answer all those questions for you. On the screen, you'll see salaries as of seven one for the five elected officials that were in question. The yellow highlighted are the two individuals that we further have to go back and amend their salaries as of the date that they were elected into their office.
Okay.
The second chart below there says amended salary rates. What is retroactively owed to the auditor in the corner or in the far right column.
Okay. Let's see if we understand this.
So again, as of July first of twenty nineteen, the salary rates were amended at that point. The, since July first of twenty nineteen, the auditor and the coroner are newly elected officials.
Correct.
Those two individual salaries, once they were put into office, were being compensated at the rate of the twenty fifteen ordinance that was still active. So the ordinance that is in front of you today will retroactively provide payment to the auditor and the coroner pursuant to the numbers that were provided by Councilman McAllen in twenty nineteen. And I can show you that breakdown. The easiest one.
Let me try and shortstop you here.
Yes.
The two, the two positions that we're talking about were positions that were held by previous occupants that had been reelected. All of those occupants had received reelection bonuses according to the ordinance we have here in the county. My question is, do the numbers you have here reflect the removal of those reelection bonuses that only go with the person and not the position? Simple question.
Yep.
You're asking me if the, if the ones that are in white?
If the sheriff was reelected four times, he gets four bonuses of five percent.
Correct.
That does not stay with the position. It's with the person.
Correct.
When that person resigns and a new sheriff comes in, all of those reelection bonuses should be deducted from whatever salary he's currently making. My question is, is that's what's happened here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Here's your breakdown further to answer your question.
And when they get the state cola, they do not get the county cola?
Correct. They would get, they get one or the other depending on which one's higher.
Depends on which one is higher.
Question in my mind about that.
Okay, now, my question to you is this. Mr. McCollum, back in two thousand nineteen, offered to change the salaries of two individuals, the auditor and the coroner. But that two thousand nineteen ordinance was never adopted, even though they were paid. Are your calculations for the auditor and the coroner based upon the ordinance from two thousand fifteen, which is the one that's on the books, or two thousand nineteen numbers that aren't?
And looking at the chart here, I apologize, I'm making sure that I'm having all these numbers correct, and looking at what you see in front of you, the coroner. The coroner is currently being paid at the twenty fifteen rate, and what this ordinance in front of you tonight will state is that you will be retroactively compensating him based on the twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen numbers that Mr. McAllen provided.
Okay.
But everybody else was getting twenty nineteen.
Because they have not, because the other three individuals have held their position since twenty nineteen, so they are not affected.
I get that.
So now do we have to make an ordinance to put this in effect moving forward?
The ordinance in front of you today does both.
Yeah.
I have drafted in a manner in which it retroactively compensates the auditor and the coroner appropriately and consistent with the twenty nineteen numbers. And it also amends the ordinance so that the twenty nineteen numbers are in it moving forward.
But they're not getting paid from twenty nineteen. They're getting paid for when they started in this reelection, in this last election cycle.
The coroner.
The numbers, the numbers they're getting aren't a five-year salary bump. It's just what wasn't paid to them from the time they took office this year.
Correct, so the auditor will be receiving it based on him being in place on July first this year.
Right.
But the coroner's from twenty-one.
Correct, which is why his rate is higher.
Well, he deserves to get that money.
Yeah.
And we also looked at the previous.
What's going to be the correct salaries of the auditor and the coroner now?
So the auditor would be a?
Including estate stipend.
Yes, what you asked for at the last committee, so I want to make sure we had all of that in here.
Yep.
Right, so he's going to get?
So the auditor will be receiving the ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and sixty cents.
Okay.
What? No, he's not. He's getting a hundred and one three sixty-seven.
Yeah.
It's right there.
Plus the state stipend. My apologies. So the top, the salary as of seven one is the current salary.
Yeah.
I should have added in another element to this, because the amended salary of the auditor is currently seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-eight cents, plus an annual estate stipend.
Right.
The new salary is going to be the ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty. If you go. Because that was what was suggested at the, in twenty nineteen.
And I think this was asked at committee, but let me make this even more complicated. So if, if the sheriff decides not to run this next time, is his, whoever takes over as sheriff, is that salary now also being set with this? So we've got a starting salary?
Yes.
So that way?
So the newly elected, if another, the three remaining are not reelected, any one of them would be, their starting salary would go back to what we are amending to tonight.
And PJ, don't think I'm trying to get rid of you. I wasn't. Just an example.
That's why I kept a general, any agreement.
Because they still have reelection bonuses in there.
Right.
So that all has to be deducted.
Well, she's saying that they will reset that back. If PJ, if, for some reason, someone's?
Says it's going to be what we have here tonight. It's not.
If it's in the ordinance, it'll be that base salary.
It will be that base salary, which is the suggestion of our interim deputy administrator, myself, as well as HR. We would like to have further discussions about this moving forward, so we are not caught behind the ball again and not having salaries at what should be the correct rates.
So for clarity, the base salary when PJ leaves is eighty-eight thousand. If he goes and a new sheriff comes in?
Whatever the base salary is in the ordinance at that time would be.
Plus the base salary, okay. Is that right?
Which is what has caused this confusion.
Yes.
Yes.
It would be, because there's no, there's no reelection bonus if it's your first election.
Yeah.
So the base salary would be.
But he's got four of them that have to be deducted to get to the base salary.
Correct.
Right.
Which puts you at the number that she stated.
Eighty-eight thousand.
Right.
Yes.
Sixty.
I see where the seventy-eight comes from, because it's based upon the fifty-nine thousand dollars that's in the two thousand fifteen ordinance. 2015 ordinance, which Mr. McAllen wanted to change in 2019 to $88,000.
Correct.
Okay, it was never done. I believe that's what you...
The ordinance wasn't done, but the salaries were adjusted.
Um, yes, I think they were.
Correct.
Okay, so now, our new auditor, it should be the 19, which was $88,000.
Plus colas.
Plus the colas, correct?
Correct.
Minus reelection bonuses.
Correct.
Which I don't think were in your calculations. And if my, my calculation served me, correct, the 88 had a cola in '20 of 3%. 2.5% state cola in 2022, correct?
Correct.
5% cola in 2022.
You just said that.
I think we just...
Because that's, that's the figures I have from what was given to me as a part of the elected officials' base pay breakdown.
Okay, so yes, if that 5% is in there, then yes.
Okay, a 3% cola in 2023.
Correct.
A 3% cola from the state in 2023.
Not supposed to get both.
They weren't supposed to get both, but they got both.
Oh, they shouldn't.
That was...
Send this back for further discussion. This is crazy.
So, here's the breakdown up here for the coroner.
Yep.
And it shows the colas that were applied to the base salary.
Okay.
Which is what I think you just went through.
Yep. Okay. Except for that 5% cola? No, there's the 5%.
Correct.
Right, 3% state. There was another 5% in 2024. Those the reelection bonuses?
Correct. No.
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 5% state cola?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Which is what brings...
Do we still need a second reading on this?
Yes, the coroner's pay to 104, which is here.
Yes, thank you. Maybe a fourth and fifth.
Call me order.
So the base salary for the coroner and the auditor have both been adjusted with the colas applied, which is these breakdowns that you're seeing here for the coroner.
Except that...
I think so.
Okay.
Yes.
The auditor's here. Will we ask him?
No. 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 I'm still confused because...
Four questions you could get.
Yeah. All right. Do we wish to vote on this?
I got a different number than you did, so either I'm doing the wrong or...
Call the question and take a vote, see if it's defeated.
Yeah.
It's not the end of the story, we have to get this fixed.
These are from our, I hate to say this, I am not the numbers person, don't ever claim to be, but I can get, take these back to our finance department if we want to...
I would ask someone to make a motion to send it back to the finance committee.
For the study, so moved.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second to send it back to the finance committee. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection?
Can we just get a presentation on the second one? Make sure the numbers were on the second reading.
Um, that's why we're sending it back.
Can't move it forward and get it back? I mean, if we're assuming the numbers are correct, that the HR did...
We can move the first readings to conclude this, or we can send it back to make sure that the, the, the numbers are correct, because that's what we want. Denise.
Chairwoman. I'll stick to that if you are. I did, Catherine Mead, HR Director, did send me her initial spreadsheet, and I checked her math, and it was correct on the coroner. I did not see the calculations that Mr. had, but just looking at the calculations in the spreadsheet during my math, I think the numbers are correct. She did not include the 5% reelection bonus. I do know that for a fact. The colas that she had broken down in the spreadsheet, those are correct. So I did look at that math. If you want us to get it back, I don't have a problem with that, of course. I'd rather...
What is the coroner's salary?
Is she not be present tonight?
Go to the finance committee and get it explained again.
If you'd like to have her at the next presentation.
She would be happy to be here.
Do you want to make a motion to move it forward? Or where are we?
No, we have a motion and second to move it back to the finance committee, so that we get this right.
I would object, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I trust our staff on our math. If we need to get a different presentation or a different form of it being presented, we have two weeks to get that done.
And I'm happy to provide that to you prior to the meeting.
Okay, when we call the question, please. This is to move it back to committee.
Vice Chair McAllen?
No. Yes, I'm sorry. I do want, I do want it to go back. Sorry, 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 sorry.
Gotcha.
I know everybody's looking at me like I've lost my mother.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tavernick?
I'm gonna say yes, because my numbers don't match yours.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
No.
Chairman Passamit? The motion to send back to committee passes. Six-four.
Can I ask what were the colas again, please?
I believe the colas were in 2023%.
Yeah.
2022, a 2.5% state.
Correct.
In '22, a 5% cola.
Okay.
In '23, a 3% state and a 3% cola.
Crazy.
5% in 2024. And if you take the starting salary of 88 and 92 and go through that...
Thank you, Brittany.
I get a different number than we came up with.
So in '23, they got 3 and 3?
3 and 3.
Thought they couldn't do that. Then I don't get what she's got.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, it's going back to committee. All right, we are... Approval, item 21 is approval of a resolution to accept a grant for project committee. May I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Mr. McAllen made the motion. Who made the second?
I did.
Mr. Bartholomew made the second motion and second. Any discussion? Any objection to moving this forward? Seeing none, that is approved. Item 22 is approval of a purchase and payment of a handicap accessible playground equipment at the Beaufort County Port Royal Center in the amount of $799,052. May I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham.
I'll second.
Ms. Howard, duly motioned and second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to discuss.
Yes.
There are a lot of unanswered questions on this equipment, and I know in the finance committee, they all voted to pay this $800,000. And I know, I keep saying this over and over again, I came from the private sector. The private sector would negotiate this bill, not just pay the whole bill. Negotiate the bill. So my suggestion is we pay half of it, and, and that's it. Not all of it.
Any other discussion?
I actually just have a question to follow up that I should've probably asked in the finance committee, but just so people know, what would it cost to remove, what would be the taxpayer expense to remove this unapproved equipment?
And send it back.
And send it back. What's the cost associated with that?
So, I, I have no idea. I haven't even contemplated removal of it. I, I don't know.
Shipping charges were how much to get it?
Twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, for all in, for all the shipping costs and all, that was $21,000.
So, you know, in, going right to finance committee, you know, I, I voted yes to move this forward and send it forward, and I, I have no problem approving it now. The issue, though, is how it came to be. And I think we have addressed it, but that's still an issue. I mean, we're going through all this right now and the scrutiny that, that we're all under. I mean, one, it shouldn't have happened in the first place, but two, in this environment right now, it's unacceptable. And the other thing, I'm reading this article from the Island News right now, and it's, you'd mentioned in your, in your statement that she had actually brought it to your attention, or at least the person involved had brought it to your attention. This, to me, the chain that's been published looks like she was just trying to get somebody to pay the invoice. Didn't seem like a procurement error that she, that she brought to the attention. It was trying to get...
It's a personal matter. Is that July the 7th? I have not seen the article, I don't know what you're talking about.
It just came, it just came out today.
Okay, so Friday, July 1st, at 9:40 a.m.
Mr. Atkinson?
Is that the email?
And I'm sorry if I got in a personal matter.
This is drifting into a personal matter, can't be discussed here, has to be executive session, so let me just caution you on that.
Well, I totally understand, and this is completely procedural. It is in my report, and I am happy to explain that. So there are some very, if that's what that article's about...
I'm gonna ask you to caution you again and stop talking.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I hope I'm clear with that.
I'm sorry, I thought you were saying not to go into personal matters, and I was not going to, sir.
Okay.
But I will stop talking.
And I apologize for bringing that up, I just saw this article come out that had a FOIA attached to it, so that's why I was discussing it. But, but yeah, like I said, I just have issues with the way this came out. I don't want to, obviously, it's already there, the equipment's already there, I do want to move it forward, but like I said, I do take issues with how everything came to be. This, this behavior can't, can't continue.
Any other comments?
I, is it really called handicap accessible? It's just called an accessible playground, is it not? I don't think we used the term handicap.
So they're interchangeable. The ANSI 117 is a handicap accessible code.
Yeah.
And then you have inclusive playgrounds, you have handicap accessible playgrounds, handicap accessible routes in the building code, so they're interchangeable.
I mean, today, some people take offense to that.
So these are, these are adopted terms in the building code that are in state law, so we use them interchangeable.
And just to reiterate, this is two playgrounds and not one, this equipment.
It's, it's a project.
Is there a name on the card?
So the whole thing is interconnected with ground hardware? That's what makes it inclusive? So if you're looking at just structures, I guess you could say that, but if you look at how the ground is all connected, from our perspective, it's one project. The whole thing is one project.
The whole thing's in Port Royal.
It is in one location, yes.
So, Jim, let me, let me just add to the fact that, you know, looking into this at the finance committee, I, I think that we paid a fair price. If anything, we paid under what the going rate was for a project that was needed, and I've driven by, it is, it is a fairly, it's a very nice playground. Our question is, is the fact that, the question is, is whether the procurement process was, was, was done properly. So, I think the vendor did what they were asked to do at a, at a fair price and offered a quality product. It's the fact that we didn't follow our own procurement processes is why we're sitting here talking about this today. So, again, I, I think that, as we talked in the finance committee, that, that staff is making appropriate issues when it comes to how they handle this internally. For us, in front of us right now is whether we approve this, or we don't approve this. If we don't approve it, what happens next? But again, I'm gonna vote to, to approve it. Again, I think it's worth every penny that we, we paid for, it's just the way we've done.
And as an add-on, all of that will be investigated by these outside firms, and we'll get a full report on what happened and what the cure is for it, to make sure all our checks and balances are followed.
Correct.
Any other comments?
I just think we should pay half of it, not all of it. I mean, we're asking every single taxpayer in this county to put up five bucks to pay for this equipment. I didn't follow the right procedure. That's the way I would see it.
Do I need to call the question?
Uh, yes.
You may have to call the roll.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
No.
Vice Chair McAllen?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, we are at the second citizen comments. We do have some individuals that would like to speak on issues. Again, we do not have enough time for everybody. I'm going to ask Jim Prince to come first, he wants to talk about a noise complaint. Not here? Okay. Lily Harris.
Good evening to you, Mr. Chairman and county council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am a Benya, right from St. Helena Island, South Carolina. I am the only sibling of eight who never resided outside of St. Helena Island, with the exception of going away to college. My main reason for being here this afternoon is to say thank you, county council members. First, thank you for allowing the time for the cultural protection overlay to be strengthened by the committee members. Second, thank you for clearly hearing the hearts of the residents of St. Helena Island, Benyas and Cumyas, who clearly express that a golf course and the development of Pine Island will not be beneficial to the residents of St. Helena Island. Third, thank you for supporting the CPO and upholding the CPO by denying the approval of a golf course on Pine Island. We have seen that what development such as this has done to other Gullah Gichi communities. These other communities are our teachers. There's a saying which I believe most, if not all of us, have heard. We must know our history so that we will not repeat the mistakes of our past. On behalf of my community, I thank you for standing with us. To my community, please do not allow certain persons to convince you that a golf course is what we need. We do, why do we need something that the majority of us do not even play or participate? As my pastor, Bishop Dell, stated on yesterday, we need to be aware of those who come bearing gifts. If they can buy you, they can boss you. In conclusion, the approval of this request would have harmed not only existing Gullah Gichi land ownership, but also our treasured culture. Your commitment and diligence will be appreciated for generations to come. Again, I thank you county council members for supporting the St. Helena Island community by upholding the cultural protection overlay. Thank you.
Teresa White.
I am Teresa White, founder and chief executive officer of the Pan-African Family Empowerment and Land Preservation Network, which is best known for our help save Gullah Gichi land campaign. Almost 30 years ago, I moved to St. Helena Island to live on land that's been in my family since the Civil War and Reconstruction era, so I do have a stake in what happens on the island, even though some people consider me a come here. The most important points I need to make today are that those opposing the development of a private golf community on Pine Island do not speak for me, and they do not speak for a countless number of people who are afraid to come out and speak out against Queen Quet, Penn Center, and the Coastal Conservation League. They do not speak for me when they mislead the Gullah community, County Council, and the press to believe that their golf course will threaten Gullah culture and land ownership. It will not make taxes go up across the island, and no Gullah people will be impacted by its development in any way. There's no, no burial grounds on that land, and there's no encroachment in any way will occur. They do not speak to me when they follow their emotional protests with ugly name-calling and threats of violence against people in the parking lots, and they are just lucky that nobody decided to get law enforcement involved because of the things they've been doing to people. Both before and during my four years serving on the Hilton Head Island Gullah Geechee Land and Culture Preservation Task Force, I fought with Gullahs there to loosen the land management ordinance, which made it extremely difficult for them to use their land for economic development and to subdivide it to use among, for use among family members. I even enlisted a National Action Network to come in to put pressure on the town. So I'm not a person who's working against the Gullah Geechee community in terms of saving their land. So I want to make the point clear that I am actually quite happy that LVO Trapiano is challenging the CPO because it's, although it does serve the purpose of what it was created to do, it's also a double-edged sword that checks people for being able to develop their property, both the people who move here and buy land and the people who've been here for generations. And it causes them, the Gullah people, to have to sell their property because they can't afford to pay the taxes, because they can't get the money they need to pay it, and they can't use the land to generate it. Shrink growing trees and growing crops is not going to be enough money to pay the tax bills, $4,000, $5,000 a year. So I would ask the County Council to fully participate in all of this to negotiate with Mr. Trapiano to have Pine Island Golf Course. Thank you.
Robert Adams.
I'm Robert Adams, the Executive Director of the Penn Center. And for 160 years, we've been a fierce advocate for the Gullah Geechee people and their history and culture on St. Helena and beyond. And we'd, we'd like to thank you for standing with the community and upholding the comprehensive plan, denying the rezoning of the, denying the rezoning to remove Pine Island. It was a correct decision. And as Executive Director of Penn Center, I'm extremely proud that our institution has joined the litigation to help defend the residents of St. Helena and their will is expressed through the CPO. The CPO was written to protect Gullah Geechee culture, and it's doing what it needs to do. I think that it's important that we don't second-guess 30 years of public policy that has been doing exactly what it needs to do. So thank you very much.
Roy Brown.
My name is Roy Brown, and I once again stand before you to ask you to support Pine Island Golf Course. And the reason for that is because this is an opportunity, not just a golf course. A golf course brings jobs, brings opportunities for our young children. Penn Center should be, should have been a part of this because this is where we get, we can get some funds for our children. We are going backwards on St. Helena instead of going forwards. I was there in 1982 as postmaster, and like I told you before, I saw businesses that were helpful to African-Americans. Right now, we only have one little store left on St. Helena Island that African-Americans used to have. A friend of mine, Tom Bonvell, and I'm quite sure a lot of you knew him, told me that if African-Americans have a place on St. Helena and owns property and cannot create generational wealth, what good is it to them? I urge you, and I could ask you to look into what you're doing and see that Pine Island would be an investment for our children, scholarships for our children to go to school. Negotiate, Mr. LVO. Conservative groups, I have never seen them put any money in black persons' hands to help their children. I am asking you to think seriously about what I'm saying. Penn Center should have been the epic of education for the whole East Coast from 30 years ago to now. It should have been there. And if it's not there, it's because of the decisions that we make. It should be ran by business-minded people that knows that we have to develop our children to get to the next stage. The best and the better leave our areas. We leave other children behind. What are they supposed to do? Are they supposed to just slide along, just to get along and live innocently? Let our children have a chance. Give them an opportunity where they cannot get one. An uplift, an uplift is a hand up, a hand up, not a handout. A hand up for our children is better than sitting around doing nothing. Thank you.
Jimmy, could I ask Clerk, do we have an address for Mr. Brown?
Yes, I do. I have the property of St. Helena. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Down there, so we can get it. We can get it.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
Marilyn Hemingway.
My name is Marilyn Hemingway, President of the Gullah Geechee Chamber of Commerce. I've been here twice before. The first meeting I was here, I was here calling for strengthening of the CPO. And the second meeting, I was here to introduce the Gullah Geechee Chamber of Commerce in more detail, and also the Gullah Geechee Seafood Trail. We are about economic development. But let me back up to the first meeting I was at, when I came out in support of the CPO. When I was at that meeting, I was surprised, as many people were in the meeting, that there was an additional option to the golf course, and I was not aware of it. So I was taken aback. I remember recalling a gentleman who held up a document, one of the County Council members, and said, "I'm not against option A. I want to support the community, but are you aware of option B? And the impact it will have on the community?" I was also taken aback that there was an option that brought more traffic, more houses to St. Helena, which would impact a school that the council has been talking about all night. I feel that I was misled by this information. As a matter of fact, one of the leaders, I went and sat next to one of the leaders of the opposition that night, and you probably could catch it on video from that meeting, and asked two questions, actually three. The first question was, "Did you know about this additional option?" And the answer was, "Yes." The second question was, "Did you tell your people?" And the answer was, "No." My third question is, "What is it that the people want? What is the vision that they want for St. Helena Island?" And reaction is not vision. Something positive in building something is vision. So I was deeply concerned. I immediately started receiving phone calls from friends, because I've been working in this community for a few years, who were like, "We want the County Council. We want these folks to consider the golf course because of economic opportunity, and we're not being heard because we're afraid. We're afraid to speak out publicly. We've been mocked at meetings. We've been ridiculed, and people just don't want to speak out." So I'm here to say, I've actually changed my mind. I think we have to put trust in all of the people. And some of this comes about because we don't have time. We don't listen to everyone. So that when these issues come forward, we're hurrying up and trying to get to a solution. So I encourage the County Council to take a step back and look at negotiation. You start at one point, you start at another point, and you come together and you figure it out, and you hope you end with the best results for all of the people. So I encourage, and it may actually include a golf course. Thank you.
Council members, we've hit our 15-minute mark, but there are two other speakers who wish to speak.
I'll second that.
Okay. We'll allow them. Willie?
Thank you. My name is Willie Terrell, 114 Folly Road, St. Helena resident. I was, I was born on St. Helena Island. I've worked there a good bit of my life as a teacher. I probably never leave there. My parents are there. Just to set the stage, I don't, I don't know anybody, if I'm honest, more vested in St. Helena Island than me. I was a keynote speaker for the Gullah Youth Conference. I was a keynote speaker for Marshfield Committee Farms, been a volunteer for the Cymbal League, my Girl Scout family behind me, so I just, I love the island. That's why I'm here. I care less about the decisions that's made, whether we accept the golf course or not. I'm more concerned about the procedures and how things have been handled. I find it very distasteful that my community entered this whole conversation under false pretenses, was front-loaded from the beginning. I know so because I, I attended St. Helena with my daughter, who got up and spoke and said, "We don't want no golf courses, and we don't want no gated communities." And at that time, I, I support her 100% because technically speaking, I really don't. But that wasn't the issue that was on the table. A developer had bought a piece, a piece of land that had the right to develop 166 homes on that land by right. If he came like the other developer without just his attorneys and started moving in the bulldozers and the trucks, we would all get together and get agreement to say, "What is better for the island?" If he proposed a golf course at that time, we would all sit around and champion that to go from a T3 rural community to a T1, to reduce docks by 66, to take 140-something homes off the table. We would support that. Why are we punishing somebody for doing the right thing? I, I'm very confused. And, and I think it's the leadership. And I, I'm really confused that so much people are invested in St. Helena when Henry Farms can drill 100 feet deeper than permit and nobody say anything. And everybody knows the greatest threat to St. Helena farmer crop is saltwater intrusion. That's equivalent to a golf spill in a golf course, an oil spill in a golf course, and nobody says anything? Not only did we allow it, we, we issued another permit, and these are the actors that care about St. Helena? We got $35 million to Beaufort County, and the biggest land mass in St. Helena Island got $50,000, and these are the people that care about St. Helena? And by the way, while everybody put in an amendment to fix roads, somebody forgot to do it on St. Helena. And while I can't get there because a house is burning down on St. Helena, and if I ask, is St. Helena under code right now for, for the fire hydrants, I guarantee the answer is, it's not. So let's stop acting like you care about St. Helena, because you don't. Because when I was teaching and on it flew off, and I yelled, "Duck!", before that kid got decapitated, and then I had to go to a training at May River that looked like a college campus. But you care about St. Helena? Stop it. My name is Willie Terrell. Thank you.
Rather than me butcher the last name, Tade, would you please? I'm sorry, I would butcher your last name.
Okay, I'm used to it. I'll be quick. My name is Tade Oyelumi, and I'm from LA, California, Washington DC, and New York City. I'm not saying that to boast. I'm saying that to give you some background on my experience with gentrification. So I've experienced gentrification in Washington DC, which is affectionately called Chocolate City. I don't recall any developer knocking on my grandfather's door and asking us, "What do we want in our community? How would you like to build? What's your vision? How do you want to move forward?" When I was in Brooklyn, New York, my neighborhood was so bad, Bed-Stuy at the time, my friends were worried about me. By the time I left Brooklyn, New York, and Bed-Stuy, they wanted to all move there. Again, no developer knocked on our door and asked us, "What kind of coffee shop do you want in this neighborhood? You know, what's, what's interesting to you all? What kind of programs you want for your children?" No one came and asked us anything. When I was at my former employer's weekly meeting, I learned about this golf development. We jumped right in and said, "No golf, no gates. It's horrible. We don't want this development here." With just that information, that was it. Then I went to a listen and learn session with the developer, and I listened to all the things that he was proposing for the community just by putting up a golf course. And I thought, "Oh, my gosh, this is amazing. All these nonprofits I work with at St. Helena are complaining about the same things, funding, and here we have an angel investor who fell from the sky and wants to work with us as a community to better our community." But all I hear is people fighting about no golf, no golf course, because black people don't play golf. My grandfather played golf, and he was black. I know a lot of black people that actually play golf, so I think we should stop that narrative, number one. And number two, I'm just going to look at my notes right quick because I'm getting ahead of myself. It's been pushed in the media as a piece of Gullah Geechee land. It's not a piece of Gullah Geechee land that sells newspapers. This land was privately owned for 150 years. This is not the same story as the elder woman on Hilton Head Island. We're not displacing one black person. We're not displacing one white person. We're not displacing elders. We're not displacing youth. As a matter of fact, the community that Pine Island actually affects the most, the Lamo, the community members want the golf course.
No, we don't.
There is no third option.
Okay, hold, hold.
There is no third option.
Hold it, just a second. I'm going to help you here. Let her speak, and don't be rude. That's all. Thank you. Give her some time back, would you, Sarah? Sorry, ma'am.
Thank you. There is no third option. There's an option A, and there's an option B from the person who bought this land. This land was for sale for many, many, many years. If the community of St. Helena wanted to buy it, then they should have got together and bought it. Someone else bought the land. They want to do something that collaborates with the community positively, and I think we should work with them. I'm imploring County Council to listen. They do not speak for all of us. There are lots of people who don't want to get up here because of people like that. Okay? There are lots of businesses who support this because they support scholarships for our youth. They support jobs. They support educational programs. They support entrepreneurial programs that we are going to actually be able to do with assistance of our new neighbor. There was once a man who was an outsider who came to this island to seek refuge as well. He had a plan, and at one time, his message was very unpopular. Martin Luther King believed in working with all people who are aligned for the better of our community regardless of color. We should all take note and ask ourselves what is truly best for our island and what our vision really is, and work with the youth to see what it is we really want. Thank you.
Okay. That will end our citizen comments. We're now going to have an executive session. May I have a motion and second pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 30-478-1? We're going to discuss employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of a person regulated by a public body. Mr. McKellen?
I'll second that.
Ms. Brown? Do the motion and second. Any discussion? Now seeing none, we will be in executive session. There may or may not be matters arising out of the executive session.
So we don't get to have any more voices?
All right, we have come back from executive session. Is there anything to come before council? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
Enjoy everything.